Recording in progress.
Good evening. We have the caucus of council of March twelfth. Call the roll.
Day.
Here.
De Geronimo.
Here.
Narduzzi.
Here.
Pagliotti.
Here.
Tracus.
Of course.
Viverka.
Here.
Blatchan.
Here.
Vice Mayor.
Yes. Oh, there's. Oh, yes. Would we like to start with a prayer?
Oh, yeah, if, oh, yeah, sure. Let's just start with a prayer. That's a great idea. But you don't have to sit here for an hour and a half. Perfect.
Yeah.
Yes. Here on the microphone, I will try to use my soft voice.
Oh, where's Sean?
Um, thank you all for inviting me here on this beautiful day. This Sunday at Independence Press Period, we will celebrate the number of famous press period pastors. Who inspire generations with his kindness and words of love. Neighbors, will you please join me now? As we pray a prayer written by the Reverend Brad Rock. Dear God, please inspire our hearts to come ever closer to you. We pray for those people who know us and accept us as we are. Those people who encourage us to see what's really fine in life. We pray for all the people in your world. Our sisters and brothers whose names we may not know, whose lives are ultimately precious in your sin. With all our hearts, we pray for all your children, everything. Yes, everything. And finally, we offer our strength and our weakness, our joys and our sorrows to your never ending. Help us to remember all through our lives that we never need to do difficult things over. But your presence is simply for the asking and the ultimate future is assured by your unselfish. In our deepest gratitude, we offer this.
Goodness. Thank you, Reverend Fickers. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, and first meeting, which is number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three, which is an ordinance authorized into the Southwest Council of Governments for annual membership dues. The amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Chief Liga, would you like to?
Yeah, so these are annual dues that we pay every year. Part of it goes is for the cert or Southwest Merge Response Team and the other half is the Southwest Enforcement Bureau. Uh, in the case of cert, the the amount is twelve thousand five hundred. It gone up twenty-five hundred dollars this year. It's been about six years since they've increased it. Reason for the increase is basically because of sustainment of grants are not as plentiful as they used to be as far as getting items and sustaining the team. It just requires a little bit more funding. Pretty much the same thing for the police department. They they increase their dues as well. Um, this year, last year, they had an assessment for a building they constructed. And they also need some funds to sustain that as well, so.
And these are things that we cannot do individually as a municipal.
No, the amount of resources, I mean, as an example, I think cert's got like two million dollars in assets that you bring to bear for the different technical rescues that they do and the police, I'm sure have a healthy uh set of resources there as well that we just would not be able to afford on our own.
We're kind of a ladder truck worth two million dollars just by ourselves.
We're very lucky to be a part of the regional team. It allows us to access uh SWAT team members from multiple different jurisdictions. Our department simply would just even wouldn't be big enough to sustain our own SWAT team like this. Um, but also just want to give a shout out that our Lieutenant Martin is in control of all the regional SWAT team. Um, he was appointed the head of that and they've been doing just great work for us. They're very valuable.
We also house the uh the brand new cert hazmat vehicle that arrived uh in the fall. So that that runs out of our station now. We have two members that are assigned to that.
No, no.
It says that we have any questions.
We'll clarify that.
Any objections?
Absolutely. No, no, I agree.
Uh, we have the representative of this power community services here. Yes, I invited Ron Towns.
Actually, it's uh from First Energy.
Okay. Really, uh, place of uh. Kevin Smalling, he was our rep. And Ryan's here to introduce himself and just assure you that he's on the phone. Every time I've called him so far, he's answered the phone, no matter what time of night, early in the morning, he's there. That's all. And I'm gonna tell you what I call these guys right off.
Yeah, but does he respond? Does he get things handled? I've just put him on notice that when Dave calls, you gotta be.
You know, I was gonna, I didn't mind giving a curse on him because that's the guy that always complains about the bills. Don't answer it.
Nice to meet you, Ryan. Welcome aboard.
Can I just take a minute?
Yeah, sure.
Sure. Go ahead.
Thirty seconds, but go ahead.
Just put it in my hand. So just to go with Kevin Smalling, like Representative Green mentioned, um, I've been with the uh First Energy eighteen years. Uh, the bulk of it in engineering, um, uh, regulatory affairs type of work and um the last five years up until May of twenty twenty-three, uh, over the Brooklyn Line Shop over at Ridge and Clinton on the west side, just north of Ridge Park Square. Uh, this scheduling work, designing work, dealing with customers, getting things done. Um, that's the the background I'd bring uh to this uh position. I've been doing this work since mid one three that just now have been assigned uh independents and have gotten a chance to to meet Chief Riga and uh Representative United Burn and and started to work on two issues and getting involved and I've really enjoyed that. Uh, my wife Kelly and I have been married fifteen years, fourteen. Uh, this September, we have a twelve and eight year old, Micah and Jude, and we live in Old Brooklyn, just at forty states. I'm only ten fifteen minutes away from here. Uh, not far, whatever needs are. And like Representative said, I'm gonna serve. I pick up my phone. Uh, no, Terry Queen was the manager of the hive. I don't know if you're familiar with that name, but his first rule to me was answer the phone. Uh, answer the phone. So I've been trying to say that. Uh, last but not least, uh, I believe we have to pass out some cards uh to administration council. Feel free, uh, resident raises a complaint to an issue, brings out to me. And I'll get that word back to the proper councilman and director that's the register. That way, and then they can give it back to constituents so that everybody gets the same answers and they're hearing the same. You're in the know. I want you all to be in the know as well as well. So.
Great.
I think I've gone long than thirty seconds, but I'm here to sort of looking forward to the long before.
Yeah, but you're not answering your phone.
Uh, oh, my goodness. Well, I told him to turn it off.
Okay, good. We'll do a good job. You did good. You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you.
Uh, and now we will jump to the uh, it's ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty. It's an ordinance granting special conditional use permits from Empowered Community Services LLC. And this was a recommendation that came out of the planning commission. When the mayor commented on the planning commission decision involved.
Uh, actually, John, do you want to talk about that? Did you, did they hear the representative?
The attorney.
I'd be happy to talk about it. Thank you. I'm gonna take a lesson from the last speaker and not get the mayor and myself on numbers, but I don't get put next.
We thought uh because of the bridge project, the traffic, the minimal traffic now because that the westbound traffic has been severely reduced in in our favor. That we could thought it would be a good opportunity to take advantage of. Uh the design and construction of this lane widening while the traffic is still not coming at us for another year. I think July of twenty five is when the traffic is intended to open back up for westbound. So we thought it would be a good opportunity to try to get this done before that project for the traffic started coming.
Don wasn't that intersection just dealt with in twenty fifteen, including some federal money? Didn't they engineer it at that particular time as they also widen Pleasant Valley down to the former TRW?
Yeah, I believe it was yeah, in two thousand, that sounds about right thirteen fourteen.
Fifteen.
Mm hmm. Right, we had received some. Ohio Public Works Commission grant of funding and some county funding to uh upgrade East Pleasant Valley.
And what's changed with the conditions? There have been a dramatic change with the number of. Uh workers, I would think that when Kitchler left, that whoever took their place, we wouldn't have more workers and more traffic amount. Was there a traffic survey done?
Not since the, you know, I think the investment we made out there and it was significant in terms of the millions of dollars that were spent. We definitely saw some revitalization of the of some of the abandoned businesses down there and the buildings were. Um upgraded and it did tend to it added employees and traffic came with it. And um I think that's when we started receiving the complaints from from the community that there was some need for some improvement.
What what's the what's the thought related to enlarging that already? A large intersection, it's already a five lane intersection for someone on a bicycle or someone walking to try to get across there. Plus, the attitude of some of the drivers westbound on Pleasant Valley making that turn frequently without stopping. Um won't this exacerbate the situation?
Yeah, I I guess I'm not aware of any safety issues there. Um but for sure, people who disobey, you know, red lights don't stop and they make, you know, movements. Slow down and don't stop it for sure would be a safety issue. Pedestrian movements will be studied and adequate timing will be provided to allow pedestrians that safe uh. Crossing time to be part of this.
Dan, when we uh if I may, Councilman, uh when we widened and added those turn lanes on Route twenty one. Uh I'm not aware, Chief, that we've had additional safety concerns uh by adding those two turn lanes. Uh south, north and south. Uh on on Brexville Road.
No, we've no had no additional safety issues that I'm aware of since my time here. I mean, excess, I mean, we could, any street, we could talk about speed and we could talk about people running red lights. We do everything we can to make sure we curb bad behavior. I mean, COVID clearly created a monster with uh many of the motorists community. I don't feel that you need to any one intersection, so I I have nothing that would substantiate that.
Thank you.
Counselment Trigus.
Uh thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh Don, a couple of questions for you. Um the uh first one is is could we, if it seems that one company is having this problem. Uh can we talk to them about maybe having them have different work hours that might alleviate some of that situation? Like release people fifteen minutes later or something like that, or we thought to do that?
Yeah, I believe for a time there when they were working a lot remotely because of the pandemic, it was not an issue as they've had people come back. And they they're seeing more of the issue. Um we've looked at. It's a fair question. We what we also asked them to do or they've asked if they could, the geometry of their apron. You know, they have significant topography on that site there at Redwood and the easy solution would be to push their apron, their exit, their one point of ingress and egress. Push it further east to get away from the intersection. Unfortunately, the the topography is uh not conducive and it's significantly challenged in that regard. So we're limited to uh change that apron location in any meaningful way.
So I I guess my feeling is on this legislation that I I would like to see it go through uh a review through the Finance Committee and maybe through Streets and Sidewalks to take a look at that. Um that initial uh you know schematic that was put together last year. But you know, on our five year plan, we we don't have this in there. We've already talked about having defer a a number of our projects that we have uh put in. Uh this is a fairly new project. I do understand the uh urgency with respect to the the lanes being shut down and and that's a fair uh request. But uh it would be my druthers that we have more of a review on this through the committee process and. And get it back in some shape or form here after that is is over with, because I think we do have other projects that that may or may not be more important. And perhaps this will prevail, but I think we should at least have that conversation.
And I do agree with the Councilman Trigus and I question the prioritization of these projects and how this has somehow jumped to the front of the line, even though it. It has never been on our five year capital plan. And if we go back to the previous ordinance, uh and some of the the notes I jotted down that the engineer Ram stated. As uh it's a bad ordinance, it's a very detailed, thorough regimented study. It's a safety analysis, a traffic analysis, a crash history, a traffic study to determine the necessity of the the widening of those onramps. And I feel that for a project like this, which is similar, smaller in scope. But those studies should be completed to necessitate. This additional cost, this additional turn lane, this additional road widening. We're making a huge intersection bigger. Um we're significantly impacting a residential home, which I mean, based on. The schematic I'm looking at in front of me, we may have to purchase that house and tear it down based on how close everything is to this roadway. Um and uh. I think we need to examine this more closely before we we jump into.
I I spoke with Streets Committee, Kevin and Chris, I mean, kind of share similar sentiments, so to feel like we're jumping the gun here. So we're comfortable, I mean, if it's it's referred to a committee or stays in the first reading.
That's fine.
For some of these options. Full on traffic study, but I don't, you know, even some pictures would would uh help, you know, display some of the issues that uh.
Absolutely. Well, let's put it on first reading and uh refer to Streets Committee, that's fine.
Okay. Next, we have ordinance number twenty twenty four dash twenty six, which is an ordinance authorizing change order number one to the Townsend Corporations. For the providing of general city tree trimming and removal services for city properties in the amount not to exceed sixty six thousand three hundred and fifty. Bringing the total time track amount to a hundred and twenty six thousand three hundred and fifty thousand. And Dan?
Yeah, Vice Mayor, I can speak to this. Um I believe this initial contract was just awarded uh last month. And it was really for the citywide contract that's administered through the Service Department for annual services throughout the city. Uh because of the timing of our Brexville Road uh project and the necessity to get trees removed before the end of the month of March. We desired to engage this contractor, for lack of having any other contractor onboard for that project yet, because we're out in in front of it a little bit. To get these trees down, we engaged them, we secured some quotes from Townsend. They were willing and were uh very helpful to give us quotes for the work and they were would be happy to accommodate it. They've got it into their schedule, they can go to work uh on these trees and the trimming and the stump removals uh starting as early as. The even yet this week, if we give them the authorization, but for sure by next week, they need at least a couple of weeks. And they'd like to get an early start to try to meet the deadline of March thirty first.
So the question I have is, Dan used the terms secure the quotes. Um when we bid this for citywide tree trimming, we bid it at a crew and time and hourly rate. And it's a two hundred and twenty dollars for a four man crew per hour. And this is based on the number of trees in a specific area. Stump removal, roof grinding, it's very specific and it's a sixty three thousand dollar contract. Mister Law Director, should this be publicly bid?
Yeah, it should be uh should be publicly bid unless council wants to make an exception. A majority of the council wants to make a.
That's what I thought. So that is uh one issue I have with it. The other question I have is it's what it seems to be broken down into three separate projects and three separate bids. Um which I don't understand why. One, it's specifically with the cornerstone of hope, others for other trees. And if you reach a cornerstone of hope. Bid, it talks about. Sixty five hundred dollars to remove all ten trees. And then a thousand dollars to stump removal, all ten stumps. And there's another sixteen hundred dollars for pruning all ten trees. So are they pruning the trees, they're moving the trees?
Yeah, Vice Mayor, at the time, the quotes, we weren't, it's undetermined, it still is. The reason for the tree trimming, we thought that E L Robinson has told us that the utility relocation at that along that frontage is less severe. And that in terms of its impact to the trees, they feel like it's possible that they they may be able to just trim the trees. And so we thought, well, let's get a quote for the trimming. And and also we needed time to engage cornerstone to talk through the specific trees in question. We just hadn't had the time to do that yet. So I felt to for flexibility, it would be prudent to have quotes for cover the different options that ultimately will pull the trigger on uh one of them. Uh but I haven't I haven't been able to pin that that work down with some of the other stuff going on. But that's that's the intent. That was why tho- those quotes were broken up that way, at least for cornerstone. And it may it may be that if the trees get trimmed and they they look so bad and they don't survive, then we fall back behind it and then have to remove them as a secondary measure. Um that would also give us the latitude and flexibility to do that.
Do you have any other questions or comments from council?
If I could put one more thing out there, we initially had talked about, because we knew at the time that Townsend's initial contract was up for award last month. We did know about this work coming and we thought that we should increase the amount of the base bid. Last month to just to know that to try to attempt to accommodate this upfront at the time of the award versus trying to deal with it. Secondarily in a in a change order. So to question about bidding, I feel it was, you know, it would have been prudent to have done that at that time. The it was suggested do this way to keep these costs very specific to that project because of budgetary reasons or um financial, and then just to keep it separate. So I feel like we still, we did bid the project out citywide and now we're using that. A vendor that it was awarded the contract to to ask them to do a specific work. We have occasion to do this throughout the term of the contract when we feel that it's it's. Uh rises to a level that would benefit the city to and it'd be significant in terms of the work. This is a heavily focused work, it's on state route, traffic maintenance issues come on into play that that you wouldn't ordinarily have. Going throughout the neighborhood and residential areas that are very quiet and where those pricing that the contractor gave us hourly would be appropriate. Here, we wanted to be fair with them and have him give us a price that was very specific to this project and to these trees.
Dan, I guess to the to Vice Mayor's point, we could hire them just on their hourly rate to do this. I would feel like if I was a customer, you'd probably get a better price, getting a fixed price on something specific versus. Just hiring them out at an hourly basis. I don't know if there's any way to. I think we should have a good price here because this was the low bidder on the on the citywide program, but is there any way to. Correlate the two to feel comfortable that. We're still getting a a good value here.
Yeah, it's it's very difficult the way the contract is bid being hourly because it's really specific to the scenario where. They're not out on state routes performing work. I just think it's apples and oranges, so I think that's what you're seeing here, this these prices and. Uh accommodate the work where it's at. And to try to get him to do it hourly, I think you, I don't know that he could based on, because he's only got pricing in there for the men with the chainsaws and the equipment to grind the. To actually do the work, but all the supplemental work that's needed out here for the ancillary work items to keep it safe. And also, that's the reason we're moving and taking these trees down is to make room, there's aerial utility moments. And working around these lines is not, it's a much different environment than cutting a tree in the backyard somewhere. So it's it's, I think it's be difficult.
Any other questions, comments from council? We uh leaving this off the consent agenda.
Uh next, we have ordinance number twenty twenty four dash twenty seven, which is an ordinance amending ordinance number twenty twenty three dash twenty four. Providing compensations.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Uh. The request we have here is to amend the hourly uh salary structure chart. To add the position of emergency vehicle condition, which is a highly specialized role. Uh and compensation would best align with pay range you have for level six. Uh we also need to add part time police officer to that structure chart. Uh we do have one part time police officer currently uh and his wages would best align. As would any uh part time officers wages would best align with the level six pay range. And in doing so, we felt it was appropriate to go ahead and move the part time firefighter paramedic up to level six.
Then what category was the emergency vehicle technician being paid out of or is being paid out of currently?
So that would be the part time uh which is under the temporary special seasonal. Uh so the chief could speak to this a little bit more, but it is such a specialized area. Uh we do need to be able to see that individual peonage when we currently have um set for the. The temporary.
I think it was, was it uh craftsman or something like that was the range of these being paid out or specialist or something like that? Um yeah, so our uh E V T technician is a. A highly trained uh mechanic that is certified to work on fire trucks, ambulances and all the different components associated with. Um the National Fire Protection Association requirements for a mechanic working on those devices, so. Um they're hard to come by, a lot of E V Ts work for large firms. You know, like American National Fleet or Ohio Cat or Atlantic. Emergency Solutions, um and they they're charging, you know, those guys are getting a hundred and eighty dollars an hour when we send. Vehicles there to get work on. So our mechanic here is getting paid a lot less than that, obviously. But what he's doing is he's saving us from having to take it to the dealership to get things worked on. So he's able to handle a vast majority of the stuff that we need done and we are only sending it off for. Uh you know, the stuff that we just can't handle, the dealers gotta do that, so. The in-house savings are tremendous, but you know, trying to get somebody to come in and do that work on a part time basis, you gotta pay them a pretty good, you know, uh. Salary range just because, you know, he could go elsewhere, so. And there's a lot of that out there right now where the company could be doing work for. Uh emergency services, but then all of a sudden they lose their mechanics and they can't offer that service anymore, so. Um it's one of those things that uh is definitely specialized and it's not something you can just easily get somebody to come in and do this.
Questions, comments from council? Any objection to putting this on the consent agenda?
Thank you.
Uh we have ordinance number twenty twenty four dash twenty eight, which is an ordinance authorizing.
Everyone's getting paid.
On use of which property held by the city's police department. Chief Father?
Yes, um thank you so much, uh Vice Mayor. Um we are doing an inventory at the police department. We found gear that has been unused for over a decade. Um this gear um cannot be resold as we've done with other um items. But we have a person that's willing to break down these items and the pieces are worth uh giving the city six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Um I'm using, uh it is my role as uh police chief, I'm trying to find every which way from grants to trade ins to. Um this where we're recycling items to bring, you know, money back to the department so we can use it to push our department for the future, to purchase new. Um cutting edge technology, so our officers have the best gear, so this is just another avenue. Um and none of this, none of the items he's breaking down is he reselling, he's just using the pieces.
And this gentleman is with tactical specialist?
It is, yeah, he's a federally licensed um. Tactical assault specialist, it's a federally licensed firearms reseller. Um and again, he's not reselling the guns per the ATF, he cannot resell the gun. Um some of this is also the guns that are seized by the courts that um we do trade in. Some of the uh guns that we are that we have seized, um but. We do not always receive money for all the guns, so we are left to pay companies to melt those guns down. He is willing to do that for free. Um if there are some pieces he can utilize, we still receive funds for that. In the past, we would have to spend money to break down those firearms.
And do we have any guarantee that these weapons, like for this, this is weapons for destruction, that they'll actually be melted down and destroyed?
Um we, I mean, he puts his license on the line, the ATF would know if he's reselling any of these guns. He's a federally licensed firearms dealer. Um he is connected to other police departments in the area. Um he is a former officer from, I believe, Brooklyn Heights or one of the areas, uh one of the cities not too far from here. We have nothing else further after this that he puts a spiral license on there, but he has granted a license from the federal government. So if he's willing to put that on the line, uh the serial numbers would track if he is reselling that. We keep a record of everything that we turn over.
Questions, comments from council? Any objection to putting this on the consent agenda?
I would just say, uh when you got people with grenade launchers running around out there, thank God for the police uh keeping us safe from these people, geez.
Is that what that is, the uh? The thirty eight.
Thirty seven millimeter?
Seven millimeter launchers, what is that?
Um I believe the launchers were for uh some of the chemical weapons such as like uh. Uh no, that's really easy.
Better.
What I'm saying is like uh pepper spray type of uh things or tear gas. Those type of launchers, so when I say chemicals, I'm talking about those sort of things, they could launch a tear gas canister, items like that. But you'll see on there, there's like an AK forty seven, there's items that um a police department would not be utilizing. And this was somehow gotten twenty, thirty years ago and we're trying to clear it out. It has no tactical purpose for our police department, we shouldn't have it and we are getting rid of it in the uh safest way possible.
Then next, we have ordinance number twenty twenty four dash twenty nine, which is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with Robert Ford Jr. Trustee. The Robert Power Junior Family Trust with a purchase of real property located within the city. At an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
We want to talk about this one and the other one together?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
And the other one is ordinance number twenty twenty four. Which is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with Barrett and Charles Wee. To purchase a real property located within the city at an amount not to exceed two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
So there's there's obviously two pieces of uh property acquisition. For no microphone today.
Best you can.
So there there's two pieces that we're trying to see the dogs require. Uh these pieces of property are the reason why we're considering acquiring them is two for one. Uh for the to accommodate the direction of the law. And the second piece would be we sign this. She could purchase of these properties under a developer who is planning to develop uh the most southern piece. Uh actually the former Todd car, uh which would allow us then to capitalize and donate either to ourselves and take it right away through the the planning process. From that property uh to allow for the road by the four. So let's take a step back here. Uh the planning commission has been reviewing the project with Dr. Canuja, the building of about fifty six thousand square foot medical office building. She's an oral surgeon who is located here in Independence and wishes to expand. She's looking to acquire the former Todd property of the Sentient family. Uh as part of that, obviously, we know the perpetual road widening project is forward, so the city has interest in purchasing. Uh or at least requiring right away for these two other properties. Uh so we felt that this way was the best way to help both the doctor uh and our residents out by assembling this property. Uh and acquiring this property.
Fifty six hundred square foot building?
Yeah, she said fifty six thousand.
Oh, sorry, fifty six hundred, sorry, an extra zero.
Pretty small room. Just a quick question for you. Um I understand what we're trying to accomplish here. What type of timeline do you think that we can get a deal done with this potential developer?
So the developer is under contract right now with the Sentient property, they're still doing their due diligence. Uh they are probably going to come before the planning commission for excitement approval of the April meeting. We had a very good fruitful meeting with them uh a couple of last week, we believe we met with them last week. Uh so we we believe they're moving forward, they're definitely motivated, again, they're under contract, they've asked for extensions. Uh the complicated factor of this is they're trying to do a simultaneous close on all three properties. So we're trying to line things up so that the close can happen at the same time from a from a lending standpoint.
Okay, like, so they do intend, it is your belief, to acquire all three properties? Okay, so we're essentially facilitating it from a time perspective so that they're able to have these properties and not have to worry about the residents and anything else. So we're we're basically being with that and and you think the city will be reimbursed sometime clearly in this calendar year, is that?
Well, we would assign the agreements and therefore we would not, the it, once we assign the agreements, we would step out of this transaction and only be liable should that agreement fall for.
If you repeat that, I'm not sure I understand what you mean by that.
So we could assign the agreement, so we would take the agreement instead of us being that in that title, we would assign it then to the developer. And so they'd be responsible for the purchase.
The actual cash would come from them and we're just facilitating from a timing perspective, is that what you're saying? Thank you.
And as part of that, uh Councilman, we would also secure the necessary right of way. It's part of the understanding with the developer that that's going to be donated to the city.
And do we have any contractual agreements, anything written from these doctors stating that they are going to purchase these properties?
We we are working on it, we again, the purchase agreements are coming in uh because we've been working on getting it. Uh there was a little bit of a snafu last week that we corrupted, so we are we are working on securing the assignments.
So if we vote on this tonight and the city agrees to purchase it and we don't get those contractual agreements and they don't follow through with. Actually building this and buying these properties, then the city's on the hook for four hundred and ninety five thousand dollars to houses.
Well, the city is going to get the right of way necessary to upgrade Brexville Road and yes, we'll own two pieces of real estate as a as a default position. Uh it was going to cost us ninety thousand just to uh at a minimum, just to secure the easements or the right of way, I'm sorry. So, yeah, we're investing in the future uh as part of a part and parcel of of a a major capital improvement. But we're also putting our position, ourselves in a position to uh uh assist. And facilitate uh this particular project, uh assuming it moves forward. But also, we're investing in the future because something will be developed on that property, something that will be developed on the property north of these properties. And so we're. Tying a bow on a lot of opportunity and hopefully we can just remove ourselves from the situation and still secure the right of way. Worst case scenario, we buy the properties and we've, you read the paper every day, our communities are buying properties and uh. It's an investment in the future, one way or the other.
We know this doctor is motivated, she's she's been in practice here in the city of the Metis for a long time. She's been looking for several years, her lease uh comes up here at the end of the year. So she's very motivated to move forward and get this project underway.
Jessica, so what was the snafu that you could come to us with, tied in a nice package?
So the developer was trying to work directly with the property owner and it was too complicated. It's just easier for the property owner felt more comfortable working with the city and we didn't get that until uh the agreement until late on Friday.
We had established pricing already. We had established pricing through our appraisal process, so it'd take all the guesswork out of what the value was going to be placed on those properties.
So Vern, if we run into a an issue with this, we have a half a million dollars set aside for this?
A primitive.
It just seems to me that we're really jumping the gun and hoping that this. Doctor will purchase these properties from us. We have nothing.
She's got a tight timeline, she's motivated, this is. We're we're really trying to help facilitate for moving the project forward this. When you're dealing with complicated real estate, especially the commercial side, uh real estate deals, you know, our timing. Sometimes slows things down, she knows that we need to get some council approval for this.
In the past twenty four hours, I spoke with the landowners and they concur with your assessment on the. I think her lawyers or whoever were making things complex that scared them and uh they were feel, they felt a little bit more comfortable working with the city and that this would actually go forward. And, uh, they were feel, they felt a little bit more comfortable working with the city and that this would actually go forward with the development.
So, purchase of these two properties. And if, you know, just say we do not purchase them. Is there going to be any holdup on the original purchase agreement she has with Todd Farm?
If, if we don't move forward, yes, it would, would delay that further. She would have to ask.
Delay it or?
Still listed.
She's, she would pull out of it.
Still listed.
It wouldn't necessarily be her that pulls out of it. Maybe the current landowner just gets fed up because he doesn't understand.
Well, I, I, I think he's already set up just because it's. He had a deal with her months ago and.
Commercial deals are different.
You may have an option to purchase property, especially commercial property, but you don't have a deal until. Until, first of all, there's, uh, you're not going to buy a piece of property like this unless the city's already approved it through the planning commissioner or N C D council. Uh, it's a lot of money to invest in a, in a, in a potential, uh, somewhere we're just exposed, so. As much as the landowner would like to think they had a deal, they don't have a deal until. I've learned over the years, until the money's in your hand or in the bank, so to speak. So we have done everything. And our property and our, and our power to facilitate this project. To help the landowners, the current landowners and help the city get the right of way it, it's looking for. So, um. We, we've just been trying to facilitate a, a complex situation and rumors and people misinformation. Uh, we just got to plow through it because that's exactly what we have to deal with all the time.
I know she's been in front of the B C A board already, so.
And she's been with the planning commission. And I think the, you know, in fairness to her, she, her representatives. They know the city would like to have them, but they're motivated to support this project. And I think it's good for the city long term and it's good for some of our residents too that are, uh, faced with a situation that's, uh. Complex.
So the city does support what the, what the, the intent is here on this property to make a dental office, is it?
I'm sorry.
The city does support this applicant's, uh, vision for these properties?
I would say the planning commission warmly received the applicant's proposal. Obviously, there's a, a number of different specifics that have to be, uh, tied together. But I think conceptually, John, would you say that the planning commission well received, warmly received this, uh, potential opportunity?
It was, and, uh, she actually presented two plans, one with just the. It was a greater plan, seemed to have more sense, better flow if she could, uh. Build on the other properties as well. So it'd be to her benefit and our benefit if she could, whether through us or on her own. Of doing it just because she's not as limited on the, on the one property.
Well, you mentioned that Jen or Greg O or, or Jess, is that planning commission approval? Subject to her building on all three or, or is the approval allow her to build on just the Todd Farm?
So the, the area is own campus office building, which requires five acres of land that. So these three parcels together don't equate that. So we, we're making some, uh, modifications to allow that variance to, to move forward. So that they could build this fifty six hundred square foot office building, medical office building on that property.
Jess, the variances that we approved in the B C A meeting a month and a half ago, is that, would that change or?
No.
Still not clear though. Can she build on just the Todd Farm with the approval planning commission granted?
We didn't, we didn't grant an approval yet. We could, we just had a, a discussion, a discussion where she outlined a first proposal. And we embraced the three parcel proposal. But not voted on. No. Oh, okay, no.
This month, she did not come to the planning.
No, she was not ready. We'll be ready for the April.
Either way, we still need the right of way. It's an investment in property. Uh, so worst case scenario, the city buys more property. That historically we're able to sell at a greater price or use it as a, uh, investment tool to help. Further development in that area. So, uh, and we help some residents in the process.
So worst case scenario, what do we do with these two loans here?
Lock them down. They're not being used, utilized that way anymore. Uh, their current situation, uh, floors, Robert lives in Texas and he's the executor of the estate. Mrs. Floor passed away, so that's just, uh, uh, temporary, since inserted Raymond, so. And Eric, you know, I think he, he's in the process of moving across the street, leave the impression he gave me. So, uh, they've, they've, uh, put themselves in a position to, to work through. We're not displacing anybody.
Looks like a half a million dollar gamble on a hope.
Uh, happened, I would say the only difference, uh, in word I would use it, it's a half a million dollar investment. The works the city does all the time. Well, to actually accommodate a law of, of, of a greater vision than maybe others would anticipate.
And also the doctors made significant investment by bringing in the architecture engineering firm, including the site due diligence. She's committed to the site.
She's got X amount of dollars spent already, just.
Yes.
And she's on against the timeline where she has to be out of her space.
And you said her lease is up at the end of this year.
Yeah, she'll probably have to go along with that.
So the fifty five hundred square foot footprint, was that just on the Todd property or is there a bigger building if they have the three?
So she has a proposal for fifty six hundred square feet for both the Todd Farm and the two adjoining parcels with an additional space. To grow that practice and it would grow on the northern, uh, northern, uh, the northern side of that.
So when you say grow the practice, you mean enlarge the building? Correct. But that would be in the, in the future if needed.
Correct.
So would she plan to raise the houses or would the houses remain?
Well, he would raise the houses part of her due diligence and, uh, preliminary work on the site preparation.
I would just be a lot more comfortable if we had some sort of written agreement with this individual stating that they intended to purchase these properties. Uh, it seems like we're really rushing into this.
I don't know if we're right. We've been working on this for some time with the landowners and we're still buying, if worst case is we own the property. And we needed the right of way anyway, so I don't see any, uh, it's an investment in property. But everyone's got a different perspective, so.
Yes, we do.
So we'll put this on the consent agenda then? I'll actually get that one out.
Uh, we had already discussed twenty twenty four dash thirty, twenty twenty four dash thirty one is an ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on the accepting. And processing of applications for zoning occupancy, conditional use and or building permit approvals for small box discount stores in all zoning districts. In the city of Independence.
Yeah, I was asked to put this together, uh, speaking with the building department and members of council and administration. We're just trying to make sure that we have an effective zoning plan in place so you don't have a high concentration of. One particular type of use and similar use and. Uh, I'm, I'm sure there are studies out there that would show that, uh, that, that type of recipe could lead to. Uh, more vacancies than, uh, a city would. So we're just asking for a brief period of time. We put a time period in there and. We hope the administration and Mr. Juro and our office and Jess. Uh, can put our heads together and, uh, present to you, uh, a revision to the, uh, zoning code, which should have to go to a public hearing and then. Uh, to approve.
And what is the timeframe that has been put in place for this?
For six months?
Yeah, twelve months.
Twelve months.
Wouldn't that effectively handicap or hand, handcuff the owner of this building in the shopping centers? If CBS is moving?
Uh, not, not for this particular use, absolutely, until we got our, our new, uh, hopefully, anticipatory. Uh, zoning code in place, but any other use, no.
What, uh, what other potential you could you foresee for that particular location?
If, if I knew that, I would be in reverse of real estate and make a lot of money, answer. I know, I, I, I know it's very funny to use a beautiful day, but, uh, I don't know. I really don't know.
Right, well, I'm, I'm just saying, if, if we're eliminating, we're eliminating small, small box stores. So what particular options might the owner of that property have? That, that's my only concern. I mean, I, I understand the concern about, you don't want to impose a junk store. But. How much do we have a right to? Sell a property owner, say, dramatically restricted ability to make income from my. My bills.
So I'm more worried about what this, what the, the future holds for the city than the, the, the owner of the shopping center. So. I mean, it's a twelve month period. It's not going to really hurt anybody long term, but I think it could save the city long term.
And, uh, the wording in this, it's, uh, it says most individual items being sold for ten dollars or less. And having less than fifteen percent of shelf space dedicated to fresh food and produce. Now with that prohibit, uh, we have Walgreens, we have, uh, drug marts, drug mart has fresh food and produce. Walgreens does not, we assume most items of Walgreens are around ten bucks, but that prohibit a, a national.
So I'd have to look at the particular, uh, it's just they, uh, with Mike, I'd have to. Sit down and look at, uh, whatever metrics they provided as far as goods to be sold and look and see if it, it applied or not. Of course, you know, but a use comes that, uh, that is something that's, uh. Uh, amenable to the city. There's no reason why that couldn't be come up. Somebody could come in. And was a city council during a public meeting and say, I'm interested in doing this and the majority of city council. Instruct the administration to investigate that use and we, that's another possibility too.
So we have a lot of flexibility is what you're saying. If, if in fact somebody comes in and wants to do something that the city would embrace, it'd be an easy. Procedure for council to, uh, to, uh, in the, in the building department to embrace.
Yeah, the, the, the original impetus of the ordinance and speaking with some of the council individuals and speaking with, uh. Uh, the administration and, um, is, is a high concentration of the same use. Which would, I think, not only change the character and nature of that particular quarter wherever they're centrally located, but could effectively. Run a risk of having a higher vacancy than I think city council or the residents would like. So we're just asking for a brief period of time. Um, it takes three months and we come back to council with a proposed zoning change that, uh, the administration is comfortable with. Then, uh, we certainly would be hopeful that city council would review that and either pass it or amend it. Eventually pass it and then we can lift moratorium sooner rather than later.
Any comments, questions from council? Any objection to putting them in the consent agenda? Okay, and, uh, next we have building it's under twenty twenty four dash thirty two. We received an email saying it's on the agenda. We need a motion to remove this from the.
Please.
So.
I so move. Second.
On favor.
I.
I oppose and it is removed. Uh, we have ordinance number twenty twenty four dash thirty three, which is an ordinance authorizing a retention of quality control inspection incorporated. To provide general construction engineering and inspection services to the engineering department. And or in connection with the Longano Dryas reconstruction improvements project. In an amount now to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Engineer Ram.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, we, council knows we awarded the, uh, construction contract for Longano. Uh, last month and Trymore is gearing up to get moving on that contract. We have a resident meeting scheduled. For a week from tonight to go over the specifics and work should be getting started very soon. We do have, uh, a need for inspection services on the project. Q C I does a great job for us. They do have seven thousand dollars remaining in an open P O that we will, uh, would, uh. Probably would utilize initially, but we do feel we need this additional funding to help us get through a good portion of the, uh, upcoming project.
So this fifty seven thousand dollars will take us through the completion of the Longano side?
It's hard to say. We are going to try, we're going to manage this contract internally, so the day to day construction management of it. Uh, will be performed in-house by the engineers in my department. So that tends to save and stretch the dollars because we're only utilizing Q C I for the inspector on the project. Which typically is at the lower rate than the project managers doing the management. So, um, you know, there's a burn rate that, uh. Will, will be realized and we'll know more as the job goes. Um, we do also know that ramping into a project and ramping out of a project are typically times where there's not a high va, uh, amount of work. So that, um, and again, it helps us stretch the crux of the, these contracts into the sweet spot of construction. And helps us be efficient.
John, in the past, there's normally been a, uh. The inspections are related to a certain percentage of the pot of a program. It's being, uh, approximately a two and a half million dollar program. We're going to divide it up between staff and another inspector. So ultimately, who bears responsibility if there's a problem?
Well, management is, we, we try to manage most all of our contracts anymore with our, with our guys. The day to day management, uh, well, of all our maintenance contracts, that's, again, we do that in-house. So, you know, look, when you say liability, we, managing a job means we're making decisions. So ultimately the decisions are made, you know, by city, you know, personnel. So there's the liability there falls square on our shoulders in, in that regard. Relative to workmanship and specifications, the day to day work on site being inspected, that, that would be the responsibility. And, and insurance of the, of Q C I in this instance. So there's, I think there's clear lines. Just would depend on whatever the issue would arise where there may be some overlap. With risk or liability.
Cause I know in the past, we, the reason we went to three different inspection. Uh, companies is so we could, uh, assign certain ones to certain projects. So this is kind of a departure from what we've done before.
No, I don't believe so. I think, and that's why that we worded it the way we worded it, that it's for general services. So there, Q C I is one of a handful of well qualified consulting firms that we do attempt to do that. Line guys up with, uh, you know, their strengths to specific projects and we did. Point out in the, uh, request for legislation that, that Q C I is coming off of a job with Trymore and Berea. And so that kind of team has been in place now for a couple of years on a project and. And we felt it was, you know, in the city's best interest to kind of maintain that, that dynamic in our best interest. So I think it's, we're doing that very thing here in this regard.
And what the inspection firm handled the plea report project?
That was A C M. And we still have our under contract with them. Uh, the A C M is also handling the inspection at the parking lot on Roxwood Woods Boulevard. So they still are under contract.
Any other questions from council? Any objection to placing the sending agenda? Okay, and last, we have an ordinance, uh, appropriate a permanent fee for a public roadway. Property located on Rexville Road in Independence, Ohio, to public highways purposes and declaring its emergence.
Vice Mayor, the, um, this project has been talked about in numerous locations throughout the agenda tonight. And, uh, tree trimming and these property P S A's and Dr. Canuja, so. This is the project that requires the right of way. It's the, we're pretty much the pulling these, those improvements, streetscape improvements, water main infrastructure upgrades. Uh, there by triple A pulling it south down Rexville Road. And to do that, we need to relocate utility poles and which is necessitating the need for the right of way acquisition. So we have been trying through Greg, uh, Law Director O'Brien's Department TAF Law has been helping us. Uh, try to secure these easements amicably through the fair market values that we've offered. And out of the twenty three par, parcels and property owners that initially were, uh, involved and impacted by the project, I think we're probably down to five or six. That need to then fall on this piece of legislation for the appropriation, potential appropriation. And even out of those five or six, we are confident that we could pick off two or three of those because they're contained with, within the. Purchase, uh, these other per, property purchases, so. It is a, it is a reduced list that would ultimately need to be the eminent domain action taken. And we're, so we're still hopeful though that we can pull some off even after tonight. Doesn't mean because six are on the, on the list that ultimately they'll be filed through the court. We still ha, I have hopes, but we're running out of time. Because of the tree trimming and we have to get moving.
Now I'm looking at, uh, this is page. One hundred and one of our packet, which is. One hundred and one of our packet, which is page. Two of three oh nine. Yeah, I'm counting one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. And properties.
Uh, I could, I could add some color to it. So when we got all the information, um. Three weeks ago. Um, we, we moved, uh, quickly. Uh, so the, the purpose of this ordinance. Is so that we can get immediate access to property prior to April first. Uh, and why that's important is because if there's trees to be removed. There's a question whether or not they can be removed on or after April first because of the Indian event. So we, we approached every property owner, asked them if they wanted to agree, agree to. Sell the city pursuant to the appraisal that was acquired through, uh. C T consultants and through Don's office. But more importantly, we wanted access to the property prior to, uh, April fourth. So if, uh, if there's trees affected. We need to cut them down. So you don't have to wait to start your project till next year. Uh, so. So some, uh, property owners have agreed to the access, but the city is still talking to them about the appraised value. And I tell, uh, to be candid, I've told every property owner, it's called our office, say, you know. The law department is not in a position to negotiate. The appraised value is the appraised value. Uh, but some people want additional time of dealing with a lot, a lot of. Uh, uh, grandfathers and grandmothers in that area and dealing with a lot of their, their children. Uh, but most have come forward and provide the access agreement. On this list as of today. Cause we needed to put it in front of you. We received an access agreement from Rockside Forest right there.
Yes.
Uh, and we've received an access agreement for Ronald Latar. So we can remove those two properties. Out of the abundance of caution, because I didn't know what council was going to with Macheski and floor, uh, we put them on there. Uh, we've heard from one commercial property owner, Cleaver, they have no intention to provide an access. Um, I don't know why I didn't speak to their lawyer at great depth. It just did not have the time. And, um, I'm hopeful as, as the engineer said, that a couple of, uh, these other. Property owners will come in at the very least with the access agreement. We won't have to file petition for appropriation, but. We're under the, we're under a timing issue. And if we can't get access to a particular piece of property that's on this list. Um, we'll have no other choice but to file a petition for appropriation and deposit. The necessary funds with the court and then that could give us an immediate right to the property.
Brian, Tom Kramer, if he's on this list, he did drop off his access agreement. So if he's on here, he probably could be removed, but I'm not sure if we're editing the list. That's in the, on the agenda tonight.
I don't see Kramer on the.
Oh, okay. Maybe he was already, he, he's, he's, he's out there.
I got an updated one.
I don't know why.
Oh, okay. Great. You must have got that. That's, that's prudent. Thank you.
And, uh, what is the total financial impact? Of the purchase of all these.
African single property alone compared to.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know, but we're not asking for. For that, we're, so the, the normal process would be for anybody who owns property along the corridor. Most people have signed. Uh, the agreement, they, they've agreed to sell the city property based upon the appraisal. We will have to retain a title company. I use, we usually use a local one regency. I have reached out to him, yes. Do the necessary title work and to enter a very simple purchase agreement. And then my goal would be to just have an omnibus ordinance listing all the properties being sold. And the purchase agreements and the amounts in the appraisal and do that at a subsequent time. But this, these are for, um, these, these individuals, what the amounts were within the exhibits. I'm sorry, I didn't put that in there. Uh, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's. But it, it's nominal amount, but whatever, whatever in the appraisal would be required by the statute to put on deposit with. That's still hopeful that we're going to get the access agreement from everybody other than Cleaver who's mentioned that they're not going to give it.
And now Cleaver, right? We, they, we did file and it's the same company at the end of Cleveland port. That we filed appropriation with and we did that project that we settled that with them.
We got an access agreement from them. Um, no, we have not. The simple answer is no. Um, I have been not been, I know I spoke with Joe Baylock who has some involvement still. They wanted to do some force trading. With the city with some property that. Behind his daughter's house. I'm going on memory here. And candidly, that was at a meeting he had headed about four or five months ago and. Uh, I haven't circled back with him on it. I don't know if that is the impetus because it's not Joe Bayla who's sending me. Uh, the email. It's, it's their general counsel. For whoever owns that part. I think it's still the Vinnie family, but it's in Joe. I don't, I didn't look at it. Please don't. But I don't think, uh, Joe was copied on, on that email.
So council.
Go ahead.
Uh, I did total up the cost of. All of the right of ways along this corridor. It's about three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. And then you add on top of that, the cost of these two houses, which is another. What do we say? Four hundred and ninety thousand? Um, so you're at over eight hundred thousand dollars in property acquisition to life this road by two feet. And severely impacts a lot of residents' homes. Um. We're going to start apparently cutting the trees down for this project based on this legislation that we have that we didn't publicly bid. Because it's an emergency, even though we talked about this project for. Six years. Um, but we have to act fast. Um, we haven't really talked about the total financial impact of the entire project. Even though we have to have the money by the end of this year in order to bid it and approve the contract to start the work next year. And we're estimating it at five and a half million. Does that include this eight hundred thousand worth of property acquisitions? Cause based on the Longano, two point six million, this project is much more involved and much greater in scope. So I'm anticipating the cost to be much higher than five point five million. Uh, I think these are discussions that council needs to have before we make these decisions tonight. But I'm just one voice. So leave it up to the rest of you to do what's best for the city of Independence.
Well, that's what I think everybody should do what's best for the city of Independence. That number that you, uh. Uh, exposed, did that reduce, did you reduce that to the, uh, the amounts that were in that, uh, those two easements? For those two purchases?
That is the total cost of all right of way because we don't have any contractual agreement. The first person's that buying this thing. So it's uncertain whether we're going to have to buy the property or buy the right of way. How it's all going to shake.
Yeah, but if you buy one, you're not buying the other. So there'd be a reduction of, your numbers are a little skewed then, correct?
They could be skewed based on how it plays out.
I just want to make sure that you're, when you state numbers, you ought to state facts and, and I believe. That when you add those numbers up, there's a, there's a difference between what you stated and what. Actual would be so.
There may be a deviation.
Yeah, okay.
Sixty, seventy.
Well, I know, but.
About six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, so it's a big.
If you take the price of the homes out of there and you take the price of the add up to three frontages of a hundred thirty seven thousand, it's six hundred thousand dollars. So you take that off your eight hundred thousand you came up with. It's two hundred thousand dollars.
But we don't know how it's going to shake out. So.
I know, but we could be, we should be realistic in terms of the range of discussion and not just. Loud a number, a high a number and then say, well, it could be up. Respectfully. I know, it's like you said, we've been working on six years. It's, you know.
But to, to the council person tug by his point, does the five point five million include the two hundred to six hundred thousand dollars as part of that? Or is this on top of that?
Council trade, because I believe there was separate funding for the right of way acquisition. That was actually encumbered, I thought, in a P O from a year or so ago. So it was separate. That the five and a half million is for construction. And I believe our five year capital plan had upwards of seven million. Uh, in it to accommodate some utility relocation. So.
Yeah.
That's my recollection of the, of the five year plan.
Thank you.
I was a little bit disappointed that in that the appraiser used non-independence properties for comparables to come up with the. Value of the easements. That, uh. And excluded properties that it sold in Independence. So we had properties from other communities and we always have a great deal of pride in the fact that independence property has a. Intensive value that's more than surrounding communities. So I'm curious why. The, uh, company that ended up with, uh, coming up with the values to these properties didn't use independence properties.
Yeah, uh, council person, that did come up with a couple of residents. And, uh, I did speak with Bob, in fact, Don was on the phone too. Cause that was something I'm like, wow, that's a good question. It is a good question. And, uh, I could just tell you what the appraiser said and then we asked him to put it in writing and I'll send it to you because. I sent it to a couple of property owners and one property owner's lawyer. I didn't hear back from him. And. So again, this is, uh, a week and a half ago. Nine thousand projects ago, so bear with me, but basically he said very little. Properties that transfer that are apples to apples in Independence that he could use for an appraiser. And the property that I remembered stately was someone was trying to use it. Well, he didn't use this property in, in. Independence and the property, the appraiser said, oh, I know about that property, but it's not along Brexville Road. It's along a side street, much pristine, and you're not comparing apples and app- apples and you're comparing apples and oranges. And it's unfair to use a higher value Brex, uh, a higher value property that's on a side street in a cul-de-sac. Versus a main thoroughfare of Brexville. And it made sense to me as not appraiser. And so I said, well, this Bob guy who I don't know, I just said, Bob, can you put that in writing so we can send that out instead of having an individual conversation? And so Andrew Martin, who's given me Hannah's lawyer in our office, he sent it out and I hadn't seen any email traffic. Saying, okay, but I thought it was a good question. The, uh, appraiser handled it, in my opinion, with a reasonable approach. Now, having been around appraisers, I'm sure someone could come up with some property somewhere, said you should have used this one versus this one, but. Um, cause it's not an exact size, but.
Did they utilize the city's purchase of the cemetery property as one of the comparable?
Well, I don't.
Right on Brexville.
Yeah, I, I understand, but you can't, the highest and best use. For a cemetery that the city wants to expand versus a right of way. Uh, for along a major, for residential property versus cemetery. I, I don't think, again, not, I'm not an appraiser, but to me that doesn't strike like an apple to apples.
Okay.
Then I'm, I'm gonna get back to, uh, the one ordinance that I referenced earlier with the engineering ordinance for the I seventy seven interchange project. And this is a major road reconstruction project, you know, road widening. And, uh, we have not done a detailed, thorough regimented study to necessitate need of this. We haven't not done a safety analysis. We have not done a traffic analysis. We have not done a crash history. We have not done a traffic study, all of which. Are standard when you do projects of this scope to necessitate. The modification to a state route. And we are rushing into this on an emergency basis, even though we've talked about it for six years. Uh, but we have talked about. On this.
Do it for the other face.
The addition with the expense of the life. So.
First phase, did we do all that? Did we, I guess the question is six years ago, or when we started the first phase, Topgolf phase. From I four eighty, did we follow all those protocols and get all those studies and spend all that time? I don't think so. So we're following the same protocol we followed when I wasn't in office. So. We're just following the same lead that we, we did for the first phase. So.
That was an intersection.
I don't know what you, uh, more than intersection.
More than intersection.
An intersection.
Funny how things happen when you're in office.
I'm not sure which residential properties that we took. The easements across the foot in that, uh. That other intersection in the top bulk segments.
Well, you took easements. You took right of way for sure.
Residential property?
Absolutely.
Yeah, because the, because the widening went for, uh, a good ways south of the intersection so that we could accommodate the left turn lane. There was a good handful of properties on, on that first project that we went through the same exact process. We were, we did not have to appropriate because most everybody. Uh, agreed to sign off, but we did impact properties and had to acquire right of way because then if you see the pole line, it had been moved back. In that, on that, that very property that we acquired.
So those are mainly the backyards of the Brexville Road once that's our ceiling referring to.
No, these were all in the frontages.
You know, if, in the spirit of cooperation, if everybody would just donate to the city, it would be, you know, it would be great for the city and. And the, and the people can feel helped responsible for the betterment of their community by their donations. So we'll ask everybody if they'll donate. Thank you. Okay. Is there anything else? I think you did thirty twenty five, correct?
We did. That is it.
Perfect.
I presume that last one is not on the, uh.
I, I can't believe that. Okay. Good evening. We have the regular meeting of council of. March twelfth, twenty twenty four, Kirk, Kirk a color roll. Wait your turn.
Dan.
Yes.
Deidre, Narmo, Narduzzi, Tagliati, Tracus, Laverca, Walt Chanway.
We stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this world for the liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Winger already is here. Uh, audience participation.
Yes, I'm Dan Sabatina. I'm from, I'm both sides of the road. First day of the day in general, just for listening to you guys hot.
He's.
You sound like, you sound like the city is some kind of a development company instead of a city. It's supposed to be serving residents. You're, you're getting rid of your residential, those opening their houses so you can develop. What's, what's going on with that? You're not supposed to be developers. You're supposed to be. In between us and the developers and protecting us from the developers instead of facilitating the developers. But, uh, I wanted to make that comment before I started my speech.
If you got three minutes, you're down to two and a half.
We've heard about the city Brexwell Road improvement project. The improvement part is desirable. They're transforming it totally. They're telling homeowners that they have to move, that they won't. They're using eminent remain for some amount of them bulldozing their homes. Then they can rezone the land by a simple vote in council so the developer friends can commercially develop it. This is what happens when you give developers the key to the city by electing their representatives in the city office. You know who you are. The mayor with four votes from council can do pretty much anything he wants. And the mayor now has four councilmen who will regularly go along with them. If the developer complains about the city regulation, guess what? The mayor will change it for them and they've already done that. The mayor for votes and it's done. The city using public funds to buy some property just to transfer it to some outside interest. I've never heard of doing that before, but they're doing that too. The developers seem to be setting the agenda in Independence right now. And we're reminded of July twenty eighth, two thousand and eight, it was a big day in Cleveland. More than a hundred federal agents raided government offices, businesses and homes all over the country. Jimmy Demora, who lived in Independence here was one of the big fish. Frank Russo was another. It, it was seventy other smaller fish also arrested and convicted the felonies. Little fish, they always sing like birds when they're caught to listen to their jail tags. So Demora and Russo both got twenty eight year prison terms for corruption in office. Involving what was called play, ancient plate cultures. The charges included conspiracy, bribery, racketeering and tax fraud. Frank Russo was released two years ago, but died last year, giving seventy-two. Jimmy Demora got released last year after twelve years of service and gave us sixty-seven. This is a cautionary tale. So the mayor has a new master plan for the city. Militia are a millionaire and one of Independence' billion dollar mansion subdivisions are on his radar. All of our older homes are at risk. They don't care about your home. They want your real estate, your big lot. Land for development in Independence is becoming more and more rare and valuable. Day taken away from you is an improvement in their view. For them, it's just business. So what if it's not the business that they were elected to do? If they haven't got, got to you, Carter Town yet, trust me, they will. They are relentless. It's obvious they don't care what we think. It's obvious they don't care what we think. The public meeting last year on Concordia was a sham. The mayor hijacked the proceedings so he could do all the talking. Just ask me questions, right? I want a real public meeting where the residents can express their views, not just submit questions. Put a public meeting on the agenda, we want to have a say, that is, if we are still a democracy. We own that land now, that Concordia land, the residents, not the mayor, and we should have a voice in what's done with it. In my view, that land would be a perfect addition to the Hemlock Road Trail. To connect that up with the center of the city, it's a perfect mix. Why should we turn that picnic orchard into a development? It doesn't make any sense. I support the city buying the land. But uh, let, let's let the residents decide what we do with it. It makes more sense to preserve it than just give it away to, to the developers. Five hundred thousand dollars a house, no, come on, that's, who of us are gonna go, go for that?
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you very much.
You're, you're very welcome. Glad to see you're staying involved in government. And uh, we're blessed to have a great community like we have. So. We have a motion, do I motion this receipt, oh, excuse me, with the safety committee minute, minutes of February sixth, twenty twenty-four. The regular council meeting minutes of February thirteen, twenty twenty-four, that's it? My motion?
Nice to move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and they are adopted. The rest of them be adopted uh, once uh, council has a chance to review them. The reports are being submitted. Okay, we have um. Let's see, consent agenda. Approval of consent agenda items will be read individually into the record. And the consent agenda will then be voted on as a whole by one motion and roll call. There'll be no separate discussion on these items. Can I have a motion to read the consent agenda items by title only?
So move, second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to suspend the rules? For the consent agenda? Oh, we have to wait till then, what do we do?
Have to read it first.
Anyway. We have uh, ordinance, go ahead, twenty twenty.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three, an ordinance authorizing payment to the Southwest Council of Governments for annual membership dues. Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four, an ordinance accepting the proposal of G P D group for professional engineering services. In connection with the Pleasant Valley Road and I seventy-seven interchange modification and signal upgrades. Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven, and ordinance amending, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash one forty-two regarding the compensation of non-exempt personnel. Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight, and ordinance authorizing the disposal of unusable property held by the city's police department. Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty, and ordinance granting a special conditional use permit to empowered community services LLC. Twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one, and ordinance. Stop establishing a temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for zoning, occupancy. Conditional use and or building permit approvals for small box discount stores and all zoning districts in the city of Independence. The issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency. Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three, and ordinance authorizing the retention of quality control inspection. Inc. to provide general construction engineering and inspection services to the engineering department twenty twenty-four. And or in connection with the Longiano driver construction improvements project.
When the water mayor, I, I believe twenty twenty-four thirty-two had been taken from the agenda, is that correct?
Yes, that was removed from the agenda.
I thought we read it just a second ago, that's.
No, no.
That thirty-one was not.
The uh.
Thirty-one was.
Thirty-one was on the consent, thirty-two has been removed.
Okay, thank you.
And thirty-three, I think.
Thirty-three is on the consent. Okay, do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
So move to two. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I shall move.
Second.
Any questions on the consent agen- agenda? Caller roll.
DeGeronimo?
Yes.
Narduzzi?
Yes.
Pagliari?
Yeah.
Tracus?
Aye.
Laverca?
Yes.
Walt Chanwicks?
Yes.
Day?
Yes.
And the consent agenda is adopted. We have ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five, and ordinance authorizing the retention of D L Z for professional services for the pre. Preliminary engineering design of the East Pleasant Valley Road intersection, new dedicated westbound right turn lane at Brexville Road.
And that will be referred to the Streets and Sidewalks Committee? Okay. We have uh, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six, and ordinance authorizing change order number one to the agreement with the Townsend Corporation. For the providing of general city tree trimming and removal services for the city property.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed?
No.
Motion to adopt? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on the adoption? Caller roll.
Narduzzi?
Yes.
Pagliari?
No.
Tracus? Laverca?
Oh.
Walt Chanwicks?
Yes.
Day?
No.
DeGeronimo?
Yes.
And it's uh, it fails. For the project, for the Brexville Road project. Is that fair? Because we don't have time to bid, because the, by the, by the end of March, we have to have trees down or we lose that window. And I'm not sure when we're gonna have it again.
Special.
Continue with the agenda?
No, there's, I'm controlling the agenda and I'm asking, there's a question on the floor and I want to answer the question.
So the question, and I asked a lot directly, but there's accepts, you said.
Council has the authority.
Let's go out and bid unless council provides an exception and it passes.
I'm at my, I mean, search them.
What's that?
There, there is an exception, it can't be.
Absolutely. The majority of council can, can. I have a motion to reconsider.
Yes.
Any motion to reconsider?
So only someone voting in the negative can make a motion to reconsider.
He did. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh.
Okay, so we have a motion, and a second on the adoption of twenty twenty-four. Like those, yes, but they just voted to reconsider.
Right.
So now, do you have to start all over again, or you just? Motion to adopt, do I have a motion to adopt?
So we'll.
Any questions on the adoption?
Mayor, would it be possible to go back to all the bidders who we just heard from and we approved back in, what, February? And ask them to make an informal bid to see, given these new trees, and see what their bids may be and accept the best bid on that one?
Dad, I don't know, how, how practical is that?
It's just not enough time. Not enough time. I think you can ask them, but then they get.
Contract with the chief. It wouldn't cover taking those trees down. Not part of that project, this, the city were.
Didn't put the money in.
Yeah, I think the problem was it because of the, the amount of money, the, I think the last month, the contractor award for Townsend was.
Sixty.
Sixty thousand. Now, we didn't have these, this fresh ship, but we knew it was sizable, all of it, and maybe even more, so we thought maybe we might want to make that award for a hundred. To accommodate and not suck the whole contract out in one job um, for a citywide contract, so this is how we chose.
So we could technically just do it with what was approved, and then we just have to come back and do something later.
That's what I was saying.
But, but I'm not sure that that, if we have a situation between now and then, we won't be able to do anything, the city won't be able to do any work.
I do believe Townsend has been in town already, the service department.
We've already had them working.
Some work already, that was maybe time sensitive, some safety issues. So they've been in town already, working under that initial sixty thousand award, if I'm not mistaken.
So, so to my question though, Don, I mean, you know, it, it, I think just a phone call and email and say, by the end of the week, can you get back with us? I mean, would that be appropriate? I mean.
That's, that's easy to say.
That's informal, yeah.
Could be possible to facilitate, but then the next question is, do you have it in your schedule? To be able to accommodate the work and do it in, in this time of year, keep in mind, all these tree companies are very busy because of this battery deadline. So the likelihood that somebody could come in and has a gap in their schedule, waiting for the red phone to bring. It's uh, I, I don't think that's too probable.
And they're big enough to be able to do this?
Oh, yes.
They can handle this?
Yes, sir, yes. Yep, they're ready to go, they even want to get going here later this week even, on the properties that we have secured property agreements with. There's no need to wait arbitrarily, because only the ones that were filing need to, to wait till it goes through. So we wouldn't even like to get out early, some of the properties already, starting uh, later this week.
Okay, so any other questions? On the adoption, caller roll.
Narduzzi?
Yes.
Pagliari?
No.
Tracus?
Aye.
Laverca?
No.
Walt Chanwicks?
Yeah.
Day?
Yes.
DeGeronimo?
Yes.
And it's adopted. We have ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with Robert Floor Junior. Trustee of the Robert Floor Junior Family Trust for the purchase of real property located within the city.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we need a second, mayor.
Seconded by Day.
Sorry.
Pagliari?
No.
Tracus?
Aye.
This is on the suspension?
No, this is on.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, yea.
On the suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, now on the adoption, do I have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Do I have a motion? So moved, second, any questions on the adoption? Caller roll.
Tracus?
Aye.
Laverca?
No.
Walt Chanwicks?
Yes.
DeGeronimo?
Yes.
Day?
Yes.
Narduzzi?
Yes.
Pagliari?
No.
And it's adopted. We have ordinance. Twenty-four is removed, twenty twenty-four dash thirty-four.
I move that we read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty-four, and ordinance to appropriate a permanent fee for a public roadway for property located on Brexville Road. In Independence, Ohio, for public highway purposes and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Any questions on the adoption? Caller roll.
Laverca?
No.
Walt Chanwicks?
Yes.
Day?
Yes.
DeGeronimo?
Yes.
Narduzzi?
Yes.
Pagliari?
No.
Tracus?
Aye.
And it's adopted. We have orders twenty twenty-four dash thirty-five.
I move that be read by title only.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty-five, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with Eric Machowski. For the purchase of real property located within the city.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Any questions on the adoption? Caller roll.
Walt Chanwicks?
Yes.
Day?
Yes.
DeGeronimo?
Yes.
Narduzzi?
Yes.
Pagliari?
No.
Tracus?
Aye.
Laverca.
And it's adopted. Uh, do we have a motion to assign the clerk of counsel to the, as a designated to take the Ohio Sunshine Laws training? On April third, twenty twenty-four, on council's behalf?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, anybody else want to do the, the uh, training or retention?
Sunshine.
The sunshine law. Yeah, we could tell. That, that being, let me see, so, okay, so we're, I think that's all for the agenda this evening. You know, uh. No, no, just removed it. Uh, if that, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and I want to thank everyone for being there this evening.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Why? Why? Jess, will you go into executive session? You know what, before we adjourn, reconsider the motion to adjourn, uh, declare an executive session.
I would draw my motion, mayor.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, uh, I've got a motion to go into executive session to talk about real estate matters.
That's all the word.
Why you have to be specific? Purchase of real estate?
Uh, no, just. No, it's gonna be the same, yeah, sale of real estate. Yes. I motion to go into executive session for the sale of real estate, potential, city owned property, yes.
So move.
All in favor? All in favor?